Call and meet in order and ask for a little call.
Blunier.
Here.
Leach.
Here.
Lehman.
Here.
Mendel.
Here.
Newman.
Here.
Parrott.
Here.
We have a call.
Join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
There are no public hearings tonight or presentation, special reports. Anybody have a public comment?
Good evening. LeAnn Brown with the Morton Chamber and Economic Development Council. Just like many others, our offices have been closed to public, but we are there every day and trying to collect information to share out to our businesses and community, business resources, a lot of information to come. I'm sure we have a long road ahead of us, but I know all of us, especially as the Morton community, will work together to try and get through these trying times and unknown times. But that is our primary goal over the foreseeable future is to pull information together and share resources. So feel free to stay tuned on our chamber website, EDC website, and our Facebook pages. Feel free to call anytime, email. If you come across resources, please send our way, and we will be reaching out to businesses to offer our support and resources. And certainly, we can still support our local businesses. Many of them have already shifted to the curbside carryout, delivery. So check out their websites, call, visit their websites, order, and still shop local. And with that, I just wanted to share our message that we look forward to working with everybody and getting through this the best we can.
Thank you, LeAnn. Okay, the consent agenda tonight is the approval of the minutes, the regular meeting of the March 2nd, 2020, closed sessions of March 2nd, 2020, approval of the bills, and the Resolution 31-20, IDOT Resolution for Improvement under the Illinois Highway Code.
Move approval of the consent agenda.
Second.
Any comments, concerns?
Well, it showed me being present for the, for the, uh, closed session, I believe. Not, not a big deal, but.
Let me go ahead and strike that and put it on next.
Yeah, if the amendment to the closed session minutes is a, uh, the act can be approved tonight with the consent of the movement and the party you seconded. So we'd be approving the consent agenda with closed session minutes as marked.
Changed to.
Yeah, modified.
Modified. So who made the first?
I did.
Is that right?
Yep.
Second?
Yep.
Okay. So we're voting on both minutes.
Yes.
Any other comment? Call the roll.
Blunier.
Yes.
Leach.
Yes.
Lehman.
Yes.
Mendel.
Yes.
Newman.
Yes.
Parrott.
Yes.
Motion passes. Amendment.
Thank you. The only thing I have tonight is Morton has been ranked by the National Council of Safer Cities as number 17 in the state of Illinois. So we did make the top 20, the safest cities. So that's a little good news. That's all I have. Village clerk?
Nothing tonight, Your Honor.
Village administrator?
I have a couple of items tonight, Your Honor. The first of which is the approve, I'm going to ask for approval for the fiscal year 2020 final budget. There were no changes made to the final, or the budget from the preliminary one that I presented at the last meeting. So I'm bringing it forward for final approval.
Do we have a motion?
Move to approve. And that's the fiscal year 2021.
Right. Did I say 20?
I thought so.
Okay, could have.
So we have a first.
Second.
Okay. Any comments? Call the roll.
Leach.
Yes.
Lehman.
Yes.
Mendel.
Yes.
Newman.
Yes.
Parrott.
Yes.
Blunier.
Yes.
Motion passes.
And the next item is to request permission to transfer from the general fund to the motor fuel tax fund for $262,894.79.
So moved?
Second.
This is to reimburse the motor fuel tax fund for SALT and some previous, like 2010 safe routes to school that we paid in 2018 that was not approved by IDOT even though it was IDOT that billed us for it. And I can't remember, the other one was like $3,000 for I, I believe it was the project when they put the flyover from 155 to 74.
Yeah, 2017.
Yeah. But the audit, well, review, they don't call it an audit anymore. The motor fuel tax person did a review and asked that we transfer funds to cover those back into the motor fuel tax fund.
Any questions? Call the roll.
Lehman.
Yes.
Mendel.
Yes.
Newman.
Yes.
Parrott.
Yes.
Blunier.
Yes.
Leach.
Yes.
Motion passes.
That's all I have.
Okay. Chief of police?
I just have one announcement tonight, Your Honor. Typically, we participate with the DEA on a drug takeback in April and then again in October. I just received an email today from the DEA representative that they are canceling what would have been the April 25th drug drop-off. So we won't be having that this spring. In the event that they push it back and have another one prior to October, I will let you know. But for citizens that aren't aware, Alwyn's Pharmacy over here has, has a drop-off that they accept all the time.
Okay. All right. Thank you, chief. Corporation council?
One item tonight, Your Honor, and that is an ordinance mending Chapter 4 of Title 12 of the Morton Municipal Code to provide amendments regarding local states of emergency.
Could we have a motion?
Move to approve.
Second.
This ordinance is, um, in part triggered on a recommendation of the Illinois Municipal League for communities to review and update as necessary. Their ordinance is governing local states of emergency. We have an existing chapter in our code about local states of emergency that is skeletal. And what the ordinance I prepared would do is displace that rather skeletal section with new language that is more thorough, which is consistent with present law and which is, I think, well-founded overall. A couple of small points on the changes. This is a code change to clarify and supplement our provisions regarding declaration of local states of emergency, executive powers during local states of emergency. There are powers that are reserved under this ordinance that are intended to only be exercised in the most extreme situations. So in other communities that have adopted similar ordinances, there's been a public response where it was believed that those powers were being executed or exercised immediately. That's not the case here. I, this ordinance is intended to clarify the powers available in the event a local state of emergency is declared, but not, those are not powers that are, that are in their entirety intended to be immediately exercised. In part, some of the updates, many of the local stage emergency ordinances throughout the state really had more, didn't adequately anticipate the emergency powers that may be necessary in the event of a health pandemic like what we have ongoing now. So.
Let me just clarify, or ask you to clarify that. For instance, on the one, it talks about the curfew. We are saying, we are giving the president authorization to enact a curfew, but he is not necessarily enacting a curfew at this point. Is that what you're saying?
That's correct. So the, the exercise of the powers reserved by the mayor under this ordinance would be done in the form of an executive order. And Mayor Kaufman has directed me to prepare two executive orders, which I'll present tonight, too. None of those involve imposing a curfew, for example. In general terms, the, the exercise of the power should always be responsive to and guided by the, the responses necessary to the, to the emergency event. So if, for example, there's a tornado at, like Washington experienced a curfew would be a much more logical regulation to impose than potentially in, in a local, you know, a global health pandemic.
But that would be, it would be giving the mayor complete authorization to do that as, as executive order, not by trustees? Is that correct?
The executive order is pending from the time it's exercised till the, the close of the next meeting after when it's exercised. So the, the benchmark is always meeting to meeting. And so if the executive orders the mayor exercises tonight would, presuming he exercises those, would last until the next meeting after the executive order is entered. So it's, it's not a, but yes, it is.
But we wouldn't, we wouldn't have to vote. He could say tonight, I'm, I'm enacting a curfew and that's, until the next meeting, that would be enacted.
Correct. And the intent of that kind of process is to afford the opportunity for immediate response to emergency situations without the necessity of convening a public meeting with 48 hours' notice and getting board together in a room.
Okay.
Very good question.
Is there any constitutionality issues at play specifically? I'm, I'm curious on the, the assembly of limiting assembly to, I mean, well, the First Amendment says we're, we have freedom to assemble. And I'm not saying it's a good idea.
Sure.
By any means, but is that, is that a constitutionality thing?
Well, constitutional law issues are presented. No constitutional right is, is completely, you know, is, is without subject to restriction. The, the stereotypical example is you have freedom of speech, but you can't walk into a crowded movie theater and yell "fire." And so, yes, the Constitution presents bounds of permissibility in terms of the scope and manner of action. And without delving too far into the constitutional law ramifications, the, it would, it would be my anticipation, at any time the mayor exercises his authority under this ordinance, it would be in coordination with council. And part of my responsibility as corporation counselor, my successors, you know, down the road, when I'm not here and this ordinance still exists, is to guide the mayor in how to exercise the power in a way that meets constitutional muster. And essentially, part of that constitutional muster is looking at the rational basis for, for the decision and ensuring that there's a sufficient basis of reasonableness and necessity for the restriction on freedom of assembly. I would say that, and probably general knowledge, so I'm probably not saying anything people aren't aware of, but that the restriction on assembly has been exercised by the governors of a number of states. And so it is a power that has been exercised in, in other government entities. So.
So I have a question. So is, can you say this is in line with other government entities? Would this be something that's replicated with other communities our size? Do they have ordinances like this?
Yeah. So this, the baseline for the ordinance that's in front of you was recommended by the Illinois Municipal League. Versions of this ordinance have been adopted by other communities. Champagne's ordinance, for example, is based on this. They added about 15 powers by specific illustration that are not encapsulated into our ordinance. And I believe in, in you would find a version of an ordinance along these lines in probably almost any community your size within the state. It is not unusual whatsoever to have, and in fact, it's envisioned by statute to have a, by ordinance, a process for declaring a local state of emergency and enhanced executive authority upon a declaration to exercise kind of unusual rights that aren't ordinarily bestowed upon the mayor in non-emergency settings.
What, why haven't we had this in place before?
We have. So you do have an existing ordinance on, on states of emergency in, in advance of, you know, the, the present kind of declared state of emergency. We hadn't had cause to analyze it. When I, the Municipal League began recommendations last week that Corporation Council for Cities and Villages review that ordinance, when I reviewed ours, I found ours to be sufficient but lacking in, in specificity. So less than ideal, but sufficient. And so I felt like now is an appropriate time to update it. So it was consistent with what would be best practice today.
That makes sense. Thanks.
I'm, I'm not sure. I guess, I, I agree with you. I think lots of other municipalities are doing the exact same thing. I think the state is doing the exact same thing, the closing of the bars, restaurants altogether. While I don't disagree with the fact that people probably shouldn't go to bars and restaurants for a while and shouldn't assemble, I have trouble, I have trouble with the government, whether it, us government or state government, telling private business, "You cannot do this." I guess I just, that's just my feeling. But I, I'm not saying it's a good idea to, to go out and assemble, have groups of, of 50 people or more. In fact, I think it's a terrible idea. But I'm not, I'm, don't know if I'm ready to say that I'm okay with giving the authorization to, to say we can't, to prohibit that. I think recommending against that is, is one thing. Prohibiting that, I think, is another thing. Also likewise in here, and we have the three of them, and so I, and I'm not clear on which ones without referencing my phone here, but as far as, there was one in there that prohibiting the, the sale of firearms and ammo, I'm not sure if I'm ready to give, and then, no, no offense to the mayor here.
Oh, no offense taken.
I'm not sure I'm ready to give that right to, or authority to, to one person. If it was, if it was a, and, and I use this as an example. You say, you know, we, we give that him the executive power to do that, and it's good until our next meeting. Well, what if a situation like we have right now, where we may not have a next meeting for some time? Now, we probably organize and call a special session or whatever, but I guess I'm not sure, I'm not, I'm not ready to, I'm not ready to go there yet. I, I'm not ready to give that, that authority to what, what I feel, and, and you can correct me, and, and I'm probably wrong, but I, I feel like it's, it's fringing on, on constitutionality, right? The, the freedom of assembly. Again, I know other municipalities are doing it and, and it probably years in law, in lawsuits in court to figure out who was right, who was wrong. I guess to me, it just, it's, it's, it's going a little bit too far on prohibiting something.
Well, you know, and certainly some of the things you just said are policy positions and not my view to, to debate you on policy. That's why you guys were elected, and that's your, your role here. One thing I would say, just from the standpoint of describing the significance of the ordinance that's before you, I, my view is this ordinance does not expand the powers of the mayor, but rather clarifies them and adds more precision. So our existing code language, and I'm, I'm paraphrasing here, says the mayor has all power exercisable under the law. So it's an exceptionally broad grant of authority without, without illustration and without a lot of specificity on how that, that power would be exercised. And so to, to the, I just want to, you know, one of the things I came to mind is, as you were introducing your, your position on it, is just, I want to be clear that I'm not necessarily of the opinion that this, it creates new authority to the mayor. It just is an attempt to modernize the language, which gives him that authority. So if this ordinance were not to pass, for example, the, the two executive orders that the mayor has asked me to, to prepare, I would, it would remain my advice that he could exercise, he could enter those executive orders tonight if he so desired, under the confines of our existing ordinance.
And I guess, and that's my fault because I'm not familiar with, and based on what you just said, it sounds like doing this, we're, we're actually almost limiting, limiting what, what he can do. And just don't take this, I'm not picking on, I'm not picking on you by any, uh, uh, it sounds like we're, by, by these, we're almost limiting the, the broadness or the vagueness of, of what's there. Is that, is that what you're saying?
Yeah. So, and, and if you'll bear with me a moment, I, I can more specifically reference our existing code language, but I, I think if you were to, and I'm going to pull it up on my computer, so pardon me for multitasking here, but if, if you were to hear the language, the present grant of authority to the village president, bear with me a moment, I think you, you would find this language would be more restrictive, not, not less. So the, the present grant of authority under our code is, notwithstanding any provision of this code, to the contrary, this is Section 12-4-2 of our code. When the president determines in the president's sole discretion that a state of public emergency exists within the village, the president may by proclamation declare a state of emergency and exercise through the assistance of the chief of police and director of fire and emergency services all emergency powers, including but not limited to the following. And the, the only two listed are the power to direct emergency response activities by village departments, and by such emergency service personnel as the president may designate or appoint, and B, the power to utilize all village personnel equipment and resources in response to such emergency. So the issue I had when I reviewed the existing code language is, what in the world are all emergency powers? And, and one could make a reasonable argument that that, that could be an almost innumerable list of, of things that the president could do. So some of the powers that are listed there as emergency powers, in my opinion, are vested executive responsibilities of the village president anyway, regardless declaration, declaration of emergency. So the idea of, you know, utilizing village personnel, equipment, and resources in response to emergency as chief executive officer of the village, I think that's a vested responsibility of the mayor, an authority of the mayor to say, you know, superintendent Angold and street personnel, go do this, go do that. And then the, the power to direct emergency response activities by village departments, similarly, is, is not a power that I believe to be a particularly emergency power. And I think that's also a power that's ordinarily within the normal purview of the mayor. So I, I felt that the existing authority was too broad, and, and the new language was intended to be more precise.
I'd like to add this. Trustee Parrott, thank you for bringing that up. That was very well stated, and, and it's a good point, to make sure that we're in line and we're not crossing that, that threshold of from looking out for the community to reaching a level of control that we know we don't want. So because of your question, you've added clarity to me as well. So thanks for, for asking that question.
I would add one other thing, and for whatever it's worth, and that is, you know, the, the Illinois Municipal League is valuable resource for the village and, and others. And their ordinances or model ordinances aren't, aren't always perfect for every community the exact way they're written. One of the reasons I often reference their proposed ordinances when looking at matters of new regulation is those, those ordinances are often produced after a thorough review process of a lot of minds thinking about different avenues and angles of it. And so I think there's value in, in those organizations and the service they provide to utilizing, or at least working off their recommendations when and as, as applicable to what we do. And so that's one of the reasons, a lot of the language we've talked about tonight isn't, you know, derives from the Municipal League's recommendations. And I'm not suggesting you should take those as, as gospel, but that's, there is, I think, value to, to working off their, their language. So we're not out in an island by ourself in terms of the, the lines we draw in that executive power.
No, I wholeheartedly agree. I think Municipal League, I think, does a fantastic job. I think, like you said, the stuff has already been before, very similar things have already been before. Lots of people, and lots of people have taken a look at them. They've kind of been vetted, I guess, by lots of others. And, and I agree that it's a, it's a great place to start. Let me ask, is it possible to, to scratch or to, because there's some parts of this I'm, I guess, agreeable to, and, and some parts of this that I'm not agreeable to? Is there, is this an all or nothing? Or is this a, how's this? And if this is anything else, I'd say, hey, let's table it. Let's, let's talk about it. And this kind of came, you know, in no fault, no fault of yours. This is, everything is evolving very rapidly, but this came late, you know, to us to be able to read. And in normal circumstances, I'd say, hey, let's, let's table this. Let's go to it next time. But given what I know, I'm not sure when next time is going to be. So what, what are my options here, I guess, if, if I don't agree with some part of this?
So you have the ability to make a motion for an amendment. So your motion will propose a specific amendment to the ordinance before the board. If that motion were received as second, that's a priority motion. So the proposed amendment would be acted on first. So if, for example, you made a motion to strike paragraph 12, 4, 4, 6, and I don't know which one that is, selling gasoline. If that would be the motion be made, and you got a second on it, we'd have a vote on whether that amendment to the ordinance should be made. If that vote passes, then we would have a second vote on whether or not to adopt the ordinance as amended.
Okay.
Can I get some clarification quick on a couple of these before we go down that road? Because I agree, I agree. I think there's a couple of them. I'm not, I mean, an example of one that makes complete sense, obviously, I would say, but I hope we do agree, is limit and restrict social gatherings to a certain maximum number of persons. I think that goes to coincides with everything going on right now. Could you explain the thought process, or I guess, why we would want to discontinue the selling, distributing, or dispensing of any firearms or ammunition whatsoever?
Well, yeah. So the, the ordinance that, and that's part of the language the Municipal League's recommended, the ordinance is intended to cover not only public health pandemics, but also other, any number of other local states of emergency. And the, the ability to, to define, I mean, it's, it's a general standard that you couldn't probably with all our creativity come up with every possibility. You know, six months ago, we couldn't have come up with this possibility, probably all seated in a room. But I would anticipate that would be the type of regulation that would be considered to be at least contemplated by the village president in the effort of a, a mass disaster that impeded our ability to provide police protection services within the village, possibly also one that interrupted, you know, things like street lighting and, and, you know, Washington tornado, for example. You know, imagine that on, on, on that level, or even larger level within the village of Morton. I believe the intent of a provision like that would be, you know, you may not want people to readily be able to buy firearms when we're not readily able to provide police protection services within the village due to a local state of emergency. And again, on, I'll have to pardon, pardon the, the, my strain a little bit in, in that, you know, one of the, the factors that, that makes it a challenge is kind of the question requires creativity to think of the exact circumstance where that would be necessary. And I'm sorry that on the spot, I'm not maybe coming up with a, a better example.
I appreciate you trying. No, I, it's something that definitely was alarming when I saw it. And another one was the, just trying to understand again, maybe there's not, we can't think of a situation, but the order, the discontinence of selling, distributing of, of, or giving away of gasoline or any other liquid, flammable, or combustible products in a container other than gasoline product properly affixed to a motor vehicle. Wouldn't, we probably would want, if there was a disaster, we would need to drive somewhere and get away from here.
Yeah. And I think, once again, that would be another one that it would, you would be looking at an extreme event of local emergency before, before that would be invoked. If, for example, there was a limited supply of gasoline within the village and that had to be allocated for priority, you know, uses like public service vehicles. And again, I'm, I'm, chief.
Could I just expand on that just a little bit? I think what that ordinance is going to cover is just where, where the attorney's going here, where so many people, we're already seeing where the public tends to hoard. And so what this is going to do, it would prevent that hoarding, where we see it now in some of the merchandise in, in our stores. So we're all familiar with people coming in, getting more than they need, and this would prevent them from being able to do that. And again, it could be Public Works. And again, it could be public works, the police, the fire, that may need to be utilizing those, those, that fuel as well, so.
But would it also prohibit people that actually do need it from getting it?
Well, no, because it's limited, it's allowing them to get it in a tank attached to a vehicle. So, it's just not getting in other containers.
Is there?
Well, I don't see that in here.
The last line, other than a gasoline tank.
Okay, 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 I'm sorry.
Are there already limitations to how much gasoline someone can have in their home?
I never had cause to inquire into our different property maintenance codes and fire codes and different areas as to regulations on hoarding, you know, on maximum quantities of gasoline you can store.
And on the curfew question, that would be a, an example would have been that tornado in 2013 that hit Washington. Because the ordinance that were being proposed, also it can limit the location where that curfew is, is underway. So, once it gets dark, we could impose a curfew for a particular section of the community that got hit, much like when we got hit on the Mother's Day tornado that took out Cape Cod. We could eliminate that just for that location and not everywhere else in town.
And I guess.
So, I, what, what I don't wanna see really, the board is, is looking at where we're at now, but yet there's so many other disasters or emergencies which could take place that this is trying to address.
Prior, prior to last month, if we would have been talking about this two months ago and said, limit the gathering of 50 people, that's crazy. Well, we didn't think about this. And so, I see it as this is a, we don't, we haven't thought about all the situations that these could apply to. And I think we should, I'm in favor of, makes sense.
Well, the one thing it does, it gives the police, everyone known, 50 is the limit. It'll be enforced. The governor wants it enforced.
Right.
To control the virus.
I, I guess I don't, I don't disagree with the, the curfew thing when you talk about the tornado. I think that's a, that's a perfect use of, of that, 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 you know, having a curfew. Having, so you don't have people wandering around these houses where they have their personal possessions scattered all over. I think that's, that's a fantastic use of it. I guess my, my back of my mind concern is we're, we're taking, you know, rights, I guess, and giving away rights as people and giving them to a, a person to, to make that decision. And again, I'm not picking on you at all.
Hey, there's been so much going on in the last two days, I'm fine.
I, I understand that you're, you're toiling with this, but I think as, as our city council said, he can do that now.
Oh, no, and, and.
And probably in a much greater.
I, I, and that's, and that's kind of my struggle here is, okay, well, if I don't do this, then he can do it now. If I do do this, then he can do it now.
But I think every, every situation, you know, the circumstances are gonna dictate your action or your response. And I think that, you know, we look at that on our end, on, on what we're gonna do. Obviously, there's not a reason to impose this right now.
Right.
Doesn't mean down the road that that won't change. You know, as, as, as we're finding out, this is a very fluid situation.
Absolutely.
And over at Tazewell County EMA, things are rapidly moving today. It's at a rabbit's pace. It's just, it's crazy. And I think that's the urgency here for this and why you're getting it last minute.
It's been so fluid since Thursday, I can't even describe it.
Not only that, but it's a very temporary thing. It's not like you're imposing something, it's till the next.
Or village of Morton.
In, in '03, Mother's Day eve of '03, I wish that somebody would have imposed the, I worked that storm for the next two days and it was crazy. We needed a, we needed a curfew to get people off the streets. I mean, these things are good and I think it's very temporary and I, and I.
I don't care who the mayor is, you're not gonna do it without counsel. Nobody does that.
I'm in agreement with trustee Parrott in that, at least what I think he's saying in, in summary is, I think it's a good idea, but if you, but if the mayor can implement things with or without this new ordinance, then I think it would behoove us to table it and make sure we get it right before we actually vote on it. Is that what you're saying?
Yeah, and, and I, I get, I get the fact that, well, and here, and here's my concern. And like I addressed a little bit before is, okay, I just got this, I'm, I'm reading it off my phone, you know, from the email I just got, and, and, and Pat, I'm not, I'm not picking on you at all because I understand the fluidity of the last three days, lots of stuff has happened. I, I get it. But, okay, if we table it, then, then, then when? Then, then is that, you know, when's our, when's our next meeting?
Trustee Parrott, could I offer a compromise?
Sure.
That we go ahead and vote, whether it's up or down. And then, because you can always request changes to it at our next meeting. So, that we could implement it now. If there's something that you would like to see different, then you could bring it back to us to vote on.
Okay.
And one, and I'm not trying to speak for any of you on a policy position, but fundamentally, I think part of what's been expressed tonight is just a difference of opinion on the extent of, of the powers listed. And a lot of times when we go back to, to the drawing board on an ordinance for revisions, it's we, the six of us don't like this language or we'd like to see something different. If you were to say, let's table it, bring it back to the next meeting, I don't at this point necessarily have a clear understanding of what I should be doing to get it, other than giving you guys a greater opportunity.
I don't, I don't know what you should be doing because I haven't, I haven't read it in its entirety. I guess which is part of my issue too. I don't wanna miss, I'm afraid to say, yeah, because I've, you know, even I have a list here started of things I disagree with, but there might be something else in there that I might disagree with that I just haven't, I haven't caught.
He's bringing you a copy.
Well, trustee Leach, I guess one more, I guess another way, way of your thought process I can appreciate. Another way to look at it as well as if we agree with the majority of it, but there's like, for example, the one, the one I think that's been brought up a couple of different times is about the, the distribution of firearms and ammunition. So, maybe that'd be an example of one maybe that we could scratch off tonight and then also research it more and then bring that back. Because I would say that having the majority of this is better than, you know, nothing, of course.
And you, you can make that motion to amend, and if there's a second, then we can vote on it.
Well, if I understood counsel correctly, the executive orders that are also included could be passed without this ordinance being passed at all.
Yeah, if you were to vote to table it or if it goes up for a vote and it's voted now, my recommendation, Mayor, is to still proceed with the two executive orders. And that's within the existing power under 12-4.
And they're still tied to it, though.
And where we're at with that, after all our meetings and in depth, one was over three hours, the fire chief, police chief, council agree that this needs to be passed to deal with the 50 gathering, to enforce the bars, and just to be consistent and in sync with state law and to make it clear to the public. I made sure I had no, I was not getting rid of firearms, didn't address that question. I, I don't wanna go there, but I could see a day where that would be concerning. When the, all those apartments went down, that area should have been blocked off sooner. You know, there's just certain things like that, but it's, that's why we're here tonight. So, we're trying to address what we're going through now.
So, both a motion to amend or a motion to table are our priority motions. So, if anyone were to be so inclined to make either motion, that would be acted on first.
I'm, I'm kind of at the point where I think there's, you know, I've kind of got a growing list of things I, I don't know that I agree with on this. So, I think my list of amendments would probably be maybe longer than the list of things we keep. And, and, and I appreciate the efforts and don't, and don't take me the wrong way. I appreciate the efforts that you guys all put in to crafting this and thinking, thinking through it. And, and please don't take my dissident as a, a knock on that.
I know you well enough, Mr. Parrott, that you're doing what's right, so.
Um, but I, I think I have kind of a growing, a growing list of things I'm not sure I agree with. And so, I, I guess, same amendments would probably be not the best, not the best course. And, and, and I, I don't disagree with trustee Leach's sentiment that we can put it up and, and if I vote no, then I vote no, and you guys pass it. And then next time, I can, I can look at this farther and, and come back to all of, to all of you and say, hey, can we, can we do this? I, I, I'm okay with that, if that's, if that's the way everybody wants to go.
Just realize that to amend it and everything later on, that's gonna take some work. You know, it's gonna take, you guys are gonna have to inform the council where you wanna go.
Yeah.
And some effort's gonna have to be put in. A lot of effort has taken to get it to this point.
Agreed.
So, I don't, I wanna respect their commitment to getting this right. I mean, it was changing all day.
And, and my, and don't take my, my no vote is, is there's not good things in here, because I think there are. I think there's some things that I, I just, I don't feel, I can vote okay on it. And like I said, I think I would start with amendments, but I think my amendment list is, is growing bigger than the things I, uh, some of the things I like. Just my opinion.
So, I'd certainly be happy to work with you in the event the ordinance passes or if it doesn't. If you have changes you'd like to make, that's the reason I'm here is to work with the mayor or staff or trustees when they have, you know, legislative issues you wanna bring forward. So, I'm happy to work with you in that regard.
And each of you have the right to personally work with the lawyer to bring that to us. So, you have that legal right?
I guess prior, I guess, I'm just looking through it. I guess I would make a motion, unless anyone has it before, I'd make the motion. I guess if anyone has, my plan is to make a motion about the firearms. Is there any, anything else that if someone has a disagreement with? They agree with everything else for the most part, but besides firearms?
I, I would second that motion, because that's one of my list of things that I disagree with.
I guess maybe just for now, I guess I'd make a motion to remove firearms.
Well, I'm, I guess what I'm hearing, the way I understand it, is if this motion, if this wasn't passed, you would still have the authority right now. I guess you, you need to make some executive orders or something.
He has to read the executive orders and I'm gonna sign them here and they go into effect.
And you have that authority now to do that.
And we plan on doing that.
Yeah, I, I'm gonna be very honest, this has hit me cold, okay? I wasn't, other than the fact, I guess if I read the agenda, and I did read the agenda, but I missed that before. But this has hit me cold. I had no idea what, what was happening here. I'm sorry.
No.
But I believe that this should be tabled and I will make that motion to table.
Second.
At this point.
So, the motion to table is the highest priority motion on table. So, that gets voted on first before action on the amendment. And if the motion table passes, then that's the end of discussion or action on this item tonight.
Just one, one clarification, is there a point where it would be brought back? How would it be brought back then?
Well, I would suggest at some point in time, it's gotta come back. So, anybody can ask for it to be put on the agenda subsequently. And I would intend to keep it on my radar, you know, and follow up with, or ask for comment from individual trustees on changes that you prefer. Some of the changes may end up being, leading to two different versions of the ordinance based on, on, you know, prerogative of individual trustees. But yes, it has to come back. There is an affirmed deadline within which it has to come back. But I would suggest, you know, we continue progress on it and try to bring it back as soon as the next regular meeting that we have.
And to clarify, there was no intention of doing this on purpose. This thing has been so fluid since Thursday. But the fire chief, police chief, director of public works, administrator, council, I asked trustee Leach to be here. He was quickly available. These meetings happened quick. So, I had a trustee there. So, there was no intent by the mayor of doing anything without enough bodies there to make a decision.
What time did it get decided upon or was it today at some point?
The, the ordinance started on late Friday afternoon, started my work on it. And then there was some communication with village staff on, or village personnel on getting together so we can ensure that the types of action we anticipated needing to take in response to the present pandemic were fully discussed internally and so that the ordinance was specific and responsive to what we felt to be both our immediate needs and our long-term needs. That meeting happened at nine o'clock this morning. We were together a couple hours and then most of the rest of the day was spent getting this ready as well as the executive orders. And then as we neared, as I neared completion on those things, the governor finally signed his executive order late today, which required some changes to other things we were doing. So, started late Friday, which is how it got on the agenda, but wasn't ready to present to you until.
But we had a meeting on Thursday too, several of us.
But the, yeah, and the meeting Thursday was on pandemic preparedness and not on this specific ordinance.
And out of courtesy of the mayor and Pat, you were at my office too. I mean, there was a lot of discussion, let's hurry up and get this to the trustees too.
Right, we were trying to get it as quickly as we could.
I know the mayor was rushing to get stuff to you guys, which I know you guys know that.
Please don't take my.
We're in uncharted one.
No. I understand the, the fluidity.
I'm just giving courtesy to him that that was kind of like, oh, we gotta get this out. So, I heard that request to Pat and I know he was scrambling all day, so.
I, I, I think you guys did a fantastic job actually getting, getting something out. And, and please don't take my, my dissident as, as offense. You guys did what you, the best.
We asked a lot of questions, hard questions in our meetings, justifying everything.
You know, this is, this is uncharted territory. And I've, for the six years I've been on this trustee board, we've never had a situation come up with this much conversation. We're usually all on board, going the same direction because it's the right thing to do. But there are some interesting questions that came up that trustee Parrott brought up. And I think given the situation, it might be a good thing to table to make sure we get it just right before we vote on it. And then everybody's on board and we continue the momentum in the same direction. But hats off to you guys for all that you did to bring this to the table. But that's what, that's what we're here for, is to challenge these things, I think, at times.
Well, everybody's intent is taking care of the public, I can tell you that. And they were in depth, in-depth discussions.
If I could ask, and, and this is, I guess, more from my education than anything, but not in the half of what's going on either. But there is an, an order by the governor that's limiting assembly of greater than 50?
Correct.
Okay, that, I guess he has the power to do that. But what we're doing now is bringing this down to the local level. For what reason?
To provide a ready mechanism for enforcement of the governor's order.
A ready mechanism meaning what?
Meaning if, if we had a, an assembly in excess of 50 people and, and, or we had a restaurant that chose to stay open and, and provide food for service on premises and our officers were dispatched to respond. There isn't a citation, state law charge they can write to say he violated executive order 2020-6 or at least one that's readily prosecutable. They don't have in their toolbox, and Chief can correct me the extent he disagrees. They don't have in their toolbox a substantial enforcement mechanism simply on a basis of an executive order of the governor. By adopting it through local ordinance and also supplementing what the governor's provided. So, we have the, for clarification of the record, I suppose, that your question harkens to one of the, the executive, one of the two executive orders that I prepared it in consultation with the mayor and village personnel. And that would be to, to bring down to our level and incorporate as a part of an executive order the mayor, a restriction against assemblies of greater than 50 people. So, the idea of doing that is, is to give our officers the tools so they can apply local ordinance, write local ordinance charges, and also on the liquor side to have local liquor license ramifications for those who choose not to adhere to the governor's executive order and then also adopt it in a, in a parallel realm in, in, in the mayor's executive order.
So, without such a local order, what the governor's order cannot be enforced, is that what you're saying? that what you're saying?
Unless the chief has heard differently or has a difference of opinion, I've found no, um, no enforcement mechanism. It's, the governor's action is taken under the Emergency Management Agency Act, and I've yet to find teeth, uh, to where there's an enforcement mechanism.
And our thinking was, we want the officers to have a tool to disperse it. I mean, we want everybody to work with us in the community, but if they're gonna go against us, whether it be a restaurant or a gathering, they are putting everybody at risk. We have started in the staff having the gas departments and different ones split apart, so everybody isn't working at the same time, just in case this gets worse. So we've taken and made all those decisions to split the force. So the entire water treatment, all five don't go down once, sewer doesn't go down once. So we've taken those precautions, but we need the public to help us, too. So when the police show up, we wanna readily solve it and not be asked what ticket you're writing. We wanna enforce and disperse.
As far as the operation of our departments and whatnot, I, I, I don't have any problem at all with you having that authority to do that.
Well, the staff figured out how to do it.
Yeah, but still.
They did a fabulous job.
It's, ends with you or starts with you, I don't know. Anyway, you have a talk.
It's all a team. We all are.
But I'm starting, I, I guess I have a problem. Number one, I have the prob, I have a problem with the governor being able to tell you that you can't assemble. I have a problem with the president telling you you can't assemble. I'm not saying it's a good idea, but I, I guess I'm getting back to maybe where Nate's at with this.
I agree.
To limit the free assembly is, it's unconstitutional.
I don't, and I respect your personal prerogative from my standpoint and my responsibility of providing legal advice to the village and mayor. Um, going back to the, the very basic premise that, that every constitutional right can be narrowed, limited, and abridged, um, the, the, the executive order, which does not require a, a board vote, um, which is before the mayor tonight for his action, which mirrors what the governor has done, in my opinion, it would not be a violation of constitutional right if the mayor were to exercise it.
And after sitting in meetings with the fire chief telling us where we could be, couldn't be, listening to that for days, and everything has gone, I would say, in all honesty, a few days sooner than things happened, we wanna be ahead of this, not behind it. And I think we have a duty to protect the public.
So I guess the question would be, is if we would think that it'd be wrong for somebody to yell "fire" in a crowded theater, do we also think it wrong that people who are sick, but don't have maybe a concern for their fellow citizen, that they would then be able to gather together in large crowds, uh, and us not knowing that they're sick, and them not worried, being worried about us? I guess the question I would have is, is that should we consider, uh, voting and enforcing this, uh, as is tonight with the request of trustee Parrott, that anything that you'd like to have removed, bring it back? I don't have a problem discussing this again. But I guess my thought is, is that, uh, we give, uh, our chief executive the authority to, uh, explain better what, uh, the executive orders mean, so that then our chief of police can enforce those things. So the question is, is that if we don't do it, um, do we allow people to go to restaurants and dine in?
I don't think that's the question.
But the governor, the governor has said, uh, you're not supposed to do that. So I guess the question is, is what if there's, you know, more than 49 people in there? What do we do? Can we shut them down? Well, you can send a police officer there, but what has he, what can he actually do? Whereas if we do this, does he actually have an ordinance that he can cite, uh, that they are going against? And I guess that's what I, I, I think. I, I agree with all of you when you talk about it is, it seems to smack us straight in the face about, uh, we are limiting, uh, what we think would be our freedoms. But don't we also expect the freedom to do what is right? Not just the man do the freedom whatever I want, but don't we expect to have the freedom to do what is right? And sometimes we have to tell people what's right.
That's, I think, where maybe I disagree. I think, I think we, I do expect people to do what's right, which I think is stay home and not go to big assemblies and things. I, I do expect people to do that, but I'm not ready to be the one to tell people that's what they have to do. I guess I, I'm, I'm not willing to, um, I'm not willing to give up the liberty for a little bit of safety.
And then I guess going along with that, uh, I would ask council, if we, uh, don't like, uh, an executive order that the chief executive, uh, creates, what is our recall of that?
Well, you, as, um, if the mayor were to exercise the executive power and sign the two executive orders, have been prepared for his, uh, potential action at, at, in consultation with my office. Um, and if the board disagrees with his exercise of executive power, he's exercising power under, uh, chapter four of title 12 of the Village Code, that a prior board has bestowed upon him in, in relatively liberal form. So your recourse, your check and balance on the exercise of power would be to come back and adopt an ordinance which restricts that power and eliminates his ability to undertake those actions which he has, which you disagree with.
So by the ordinance we have, is that restricting, uh, him?
The, just making sure I understand your question. The present ordinance we have in place that, 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 um, I read before, the existing, um, it, it, to the extent it has restrictions, they're very nebulous.
I mean, the one that we're, uh, we've made a motion on tonight. Does it restrict what he can do?
It is more restrictive than your present ordinance, yes.
Could I make a comment?
I was gonna ask you, just to make the, add to this, fire chief.
Well, one of the things that I'd like to point out specifically with the, the, the assembly is, um, I think that everyone understands and values the constitutional intent of assembly. However, we place occupancy limits on places all the time under the fire code. This room has, I don't know what it is exactly, but if more than one person from the public came, if a hundred were in here, at some point, we would limit that in size, um, because every restaurant, every church, every public place like that has an occupancy limit in terms of the number of people. So it's really not, and that's done for obviously safety reasons. So it's not as uncommon as you think to limit the size of an assembly of people because of safety concerns. In this case, it happens to be a pandemic, but we do it all the time with evacuation and fire as well. So I just kinda wanna point out that, that I, I, I know that sometimes you, you see these things as being, um, they're sudden for you, but it's not that sudden for me. Um, you know, I mean, I pay to think about these kinds of things, and this is actually a slow-moving disaster, in my opinion, because unlike a tornado or something that comes up in minutes, and suddenly you have hundreds of things that you have to take care of, including, you know, limiting the, you know, clearing the streets and all those types of things. I think that, that that's where you see a lot of the broadness of the powers coming into place, is because, you know, it's, it's meant to fit all sorts of disasters. So, just some comments.
Should we call the question?
Yeah, so the question that would be called is the motion to table.
And voting yes or no, would you explain which, where it goes?
If you vote yes, then the ordinance would be tabled and come back before you at a later date. If you vote no, then we move forward with the motion, a vote on the motion to amend. So yes means you're, we want to be done talking about this tonight and not pass it, and a no vote means you wanna move forward with action on the amendment, ultimately the ordinance itself.
But again, a clarification that ta, uh, table in this, this, uh, motion would not prohibit the mayor, or village president, from issuing these, uh...
Executive orders.
Executive orders.
Yes, sir, that's correct.
Okay.
Can you tell me one more time what yes and no means?
So yes, yes to the motion to table means you want to postpone action on this matter for another night.
Okay.
And no means you wanna go forward and act on it tonight.
Okay.
Okay, any other questions? Call the roll.
Newman?
Yes.
Parrott?
Yes.
Bluenier?
Yes.
Leach?
No.
Lehman?
No.
Mennel?
No.
Need to call the mayor's vote, three, three votes.
And no means to?
No means that we would move forward and act on the motion to amend.
No.
I make a motion to?
Your, your motion to amend stands. So if you want to continue forward with, unless you desire to amend to that motion, uh, the next, or unless there's additional discussion, the next matter would be call the vote on whether the, uh, to approve your proposed amendment. And your proposed amendment would eliminate from the declaration of emergency ordinance, or excuse me, the local state of emergencies ordinance, um, section, uh, 12 dash 4 dash 4, sub-paragraph 7, which would authorize the mayor to order the discontinuance of selling, distributing, dispensing, or giving away of any firearms or ammunitions of any character whatsoever. So a yes vote on this eliminates that paragraph. A yes vote on this means no firearm restricting power stated in the ordinance for the mayor. A no vote on this means that firearm restricting power would stay in. Point of clarification.
Did you make that motion?
Yes.
And somebody seconded it. Mr. Parrott did.
Yeah, I think I seconded that.
So does he need to state the yes and no one more time, or everybody got it?
I think we're good.
Okay. No more questions? We'll call the roll.
Parrott?
Yes.
Bluenier?
Yes.
Leach?
Yes.
Lehman?
Yes.
Mennel?
No.
Newman?
Yes.
Motion passes with amendments.
So, so that actually approved the amendment, um, so this actually is gonna take three votes. So the amendment was to change what we were voting on as the underlying action. So unfortunately, we need one more vote, which is, goes back, we already have a motion of second. It's from the original motion of second. The next vote is whether or not to approve the ordinance. So what you just approved was an amendment to the ordinance. Now you'd be voting the ordinance up or down.
I call the question.
Without discussion, I mean, can, to, for clarification, so now, if we pass this, no matter what, you can't limit distribution of firearms or ammunition or whatever else?
That power has been eliminated from the enumerated powers in 1244. That's correct. Now, that issue could come back before you for, uh, on a subsequent night, but for tonight, if you're voting yes to the ordinance, it is the ordinance amended without that paragraph 1244, uh, A7.
One more question. If there's other possibility of another amendment that I'm, would you wanna make a disagreement to another point, would we make that now or after?
You can make, no, it would not be after, it would be now, so.
It'd be amended motion.
Before, I guess I'd, I'd make a motion, is there any other conversation? Um, does anyone have questions or, or, uh, see value or not value in, in the distribution and selling of gasoline?
Absolutely not. I got a thousand gallon tank that I could come in and fill it up with gas, and there'd be no restriction for me doing that.
Make the motion.
I prefer some more conversation about it, unless no one else has my conversation about it.
You inquired before, and I'm not trying to state a policy position, you inquired before as to some examples when, when that may, you know, be warranted. Um, so this is a tank not properly affixed to a motor vehicle. Brad's point kind of references the news story about the guy in Kentucky who bought all the hand sanitizer in the southern United States. I, I would imagine this is, or I believe that that would be, Brad's example provides another instance of when that prohibition may be warranted, is if you're worried about somebody hoarding resources and potentially, you know, gouging prices and reselling gasoline for $20 a gallon out of their thousand gallon tank that they filled it at BP.
That makes sense.
That's kinda one of the, that's kinda one of the view that I'm okay with, I guess, being fixed to their.
If we get to that point, we're not talking about mowing the grass. We're just talking about vehicles.
Understood. That's why I created conversation to make the motion. Um, and then, uh, the other one, sorry, I apologize, I keep bringing this up, trying to, not trying to make it longer than it needs to be, but, um, the number seven, or, just a second. No, no, sorry, number eight, suspend the, the assurance of business licenses or permits required under the Morton Municipal Code included, but not limited to solicitor peddlers and itinerant, um, merchant licenses. So I guess just requesting more conversation.
I'll let council and the police chief answer that.
So right now, somebody could apply for a solicitor's peddler's or itinerant merchant's license. That would allow them to go door-to-door shopping wares or orders for products. So right now, if somebody applied, they have to have personal interaction with the police department, um, which presents an opportunity in, in the present pandemic for, you know, a transmission of contagious illnesses, and then also the act of them going door-to-door. If you imagine they're an infected person, they go to 200 doors in a day, they potentially expose 200 people to, you know, uh, the coronavirus. And so it, it is anticipated as part of the executive orders that the mayor's asked me to prepare for his, uh, potential action tonight, that he would be invoking that to eliminate solicitors, peddlers, and itinerant merchant licenses, to suspend them, um, during the duration of this, this state of emergency.
Again, to protect the police force and the public, and I'd like the police chief to address that.
Clinton, there are occasions with the solicitors, and, and, maybe they're selling magazines or whatever, that we have 10 or more people in our lobby area, and we're, we're, we're not gonna do any, any solicitor license right now for the remainder of this month. And, but my records people are having to have personal contact with them. They're getting their drivers, like, they're running checks on them, uh, warrant checks, any, any criminal history. So we don't just give somebody a, a door-to-door, we try to run some inquiries on them to restrict who we have go to door-to-door. And this is just another check and balance on who we're restricting going door-to-door. We, we, we don't want them to go, uh, spread anything within our police facility to, to our employees, as well as we don't want them to go door-to-door with the general public, spread it to them. So it's just sort of limiting that potential.
This is an example of why we're having this conversation tonight. This makes sense, and I think Clinton would agree with that. But I, I was clear on it either, because this has all happened so sudden. So I appreciate the explanation.
Yes, thank you.
And building on that, one of the discussion points internally in our meeting this morning, and I know each department head has been having with their, their, uh, subordinates is defining essential public services and, and finding a way to maintain essential public services, but also to look at non-essential public services and finding ways to either delay delivering those or delivering them in a way that poses the least possible health threat. And this is one of the areas that derived from our meeting that seemed like a way to parse the non-essential from essential.
So can I ask one more question for clarity, just one? And that is, if we vote this through, is that better, is it better for us to vote this through and then bring changes later, which I support trustee Parrott and the changes he'd like to make? Or would it be better for us to vote this down and decide what we'd like to have in it exactly for the community, and then present it later, given the fact that president in charge has the right to do pretty much everything he needs to do to protect the community?
Part of that's a, kind of a, a policy reconciliation that I defer to each of you to make individually as part of your vote. Uh, from my view, um, this ordinance is better than our present ordinance, which is, you know, I wouldn't have brought it to you if I didn't believe that to be the case. Um, I am happy to work with any one of you to prepare, if, if I have to prepare six different versions of it that each trustee wants, I'm more than happy to undertake the effort to do that. And so there's, there's no problem whatsoever with, uh, you know, time commitment or effort necessary between now and next meeting to bring forth any changes that any of you desire to make. Um, one way to, a different way to answer your question would be that I think this ordinance is more precise. is more precise and more restrictive than our present ordinance, so some of the policy concerns expressed have been providing too expansive a delegation of authority to the village president, so if that is a policy concern for you, and I don't think anybody's worried about that abuse in the near term, but if that is a policy concern, I believe one could reconcile that this ordinance is better than the status quo.
And that's not a concern, but I think if we move forward, we vote for this, and it passes, then at least the amendment that trustee Lehman made will stand.
And the question with license, we went in depth in our meeting, I'm not surprised that came up, that came up with us, what are we doing with that, they had to explain in detail, so all seven of us were satisfied with what the intent is. The intention is to protect the public, the police department as well, the village office, we have locked the front door, you're going to have to drop your payments, we don't need interaction for two weeks, so we're trying to protect the village staff for the time being, because people come and go, so it's not personal, it's just we're trying to take a two-week period, we've been advised by the medical experts, it could get worse, so we're trying to be proactive on the advice of all those and the staff, this isn't anything any one of us tried to do on our own, but we've gone in depth on the license, several of the questions, firearms, I made sure we weren't dealing with that, because I don't want to do that, I don't see a need for that, so that's where we're at tonight.
And just to clarify, nobody's, at least for me, I'm not challenging the leadership at all.
No, I think that-
But the containment of this ordinance is something we need to-
Right, but I think the citizens need to know as they watch this, that the intent of the staff was to do what's right and protect them for the next two weeks. So, is there any other questions on this motion? Were you going to add anything to your motion then?
I, I'm satisfied.
Okay. So, let's restate the motion, and restate how we're voting.
We're back to the underlying, so there was a motion made, and an amendment to that motion passed, and so the action you're voting on is whether to adopt the ordinance presented, with the one amendment being paragraph seven of 12 dash four dash four regarding firearms has been eliminated. So yes vote adopts that ordinance as amended, and no vote does not adopt that ordinance as amended. And if the noes carry, the nays carry, that doesn't preclude another version of this ordinance coming back before your next meeting.
Then are we voting, if it's a no vote, are we voting, if there's two motions, on the existing amendment? I mean, the existing ordinance.
With the amendment made, so a yes vote passes this ordinance with the amendment.
Correct, the two settled issues from a voting standpoint are tabling it, and the amendment, so the amendment is settled as yes, and so you have one vote to make, it's yes or no to adopt the amended ordinance.
So this defaults back to the original motion?
Correct, this is action on the original motion as amended by the action, the last voted.
So will there be other action needed because we've eliminated the firearm part?
No.
Will that have to be dealt with at all?
Well, that can be dealt with.
Doesn't have to be.
But it doesn't have to be, in the short term. Certainly if, to the extent any trustee believes that there could be a situation where the, you know, any of you could come forth to come to me with the change you want, present it to the board, address that issue any which way, and we come back to it, but.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Kind of like to what trustee Leach said, that we can come back next meeting, we can come back and tear into this, and we can talk between now and then about-
Or you can find something else in there you don't like.
Any of us, I have seen any of us.
I'm still trying to figure out, if I vote yes, what happens?
Well, in my understanding, trustee Blounier said, even in a no vote, you can, you still have the authority at this point to do this. A yes vote actually is probably more restrictive to you, as I am understanding it, albeit maybe not exactly what we want, myself speaking for myself, but it's more restrictive maybe than what's there now, which is kind of an open-ended.
So it sounds like you've been listening to legal counsel.
I'm trying, I'm trying.
So, not any other questions, we're going to call the vote. Call the vote.
Mennel?
Yes.
Newman?
Yes.
Parrott?
Yes.
Blounier?
Yes.
Leach?
Yes.
Lehman?
Yes.
So, as an extension of that ordinance and driving out items which were, came up in discussion, the mayor had asked me to prepare two executive orders, which I had all queued up on my computer to read, and my computer died, if I could ask the mayor for the hard copies, I'd like to read those into the record before the mayor takes action on them. The first is Executive Order 20 dash 20, or, excuse me, 2020 dash 01, which is a declaration of local state of emergency, and that reads as follows, pursuant to the authority vested in the office of the village president by the Illinois Municipal Code, Section 5 slash 11 dash 1 dash 6, the Illinois Emergency Management Agency Act, Section 3305 slash 11, I, Jeffrey L. Kaufman, the village president of the village of Morton, do hereby declare that a local state of emergency exists as of this date, March 16th, 2020, and shall continue until such time is provided in Section 12 dash 4 dash 5 of the village code. The nature of the emergency is a COVID-19 worldwide pandemic. The facts supporting the determination of an emergency are as follows. On March 11th, 2020, the World Health Organization declared the outbreak of COVID-19 to be a worldwide pandemic. On January 31st, 2020, the U.S. Health and Human Services Secretary declared a public health emergency for the United States. The governor of the state of Illinois issued a disaster proclamation on March 9, 2020, due to the impact of the COVID-19 virus. The State Emergency Management Agency has declared a public health emergency. During the existence of the local state of emergency, the village president shall execute such authority as provided under the Illinois Municipal Code, the Illinois Emergency Management Agency Act, and Section 12 dash 4 dash 4 of the village code. The declaration of local state of emergency shall be filed with the village clerk as soon as practical, and then there's a signature section for the mayor, and there is an acknowledgement section by notary public. The second executive order, which is Executive Order 2020 dash 02, which is COVID-19 Local State of Emergency Order Number Two, provides as follows, whereas I, Jeffrey L. Kaufman, village president of the village of Morton, declared a local state of emergency in the village of Morton on March 16, 2020, and whereas the Centers for Disease Control and Prevention issued guidelines recommending that for the next eight weeks, large events and mass gatherings that consist of 50 or more be canceled or postponed, and whereas the village of Morton has recommended that all social gatherings be canceled or postponed, and whereas social distancing can be an effective component of community mitigation activities to support slowing the spread of the COVID-19 virus, and whereas peddlers, solicitors, and itinerant merchants require permits from the village of Morton to operate within the corporate limits of the village of Morton, whereas the process of issuing solicitors, peddlers, and itinerant merchants licenses within the village of Morton, and thereafter the actions by peddlers, solicitors, and itinerant merchants within the village of Morton requires contact in excess of the recommended limits of social distancing, whereas village president of the village of Morton believes that offering peddlers, solicitors, and itinerant merchants licenses during a local state of emergency is not an essential public function, whereas on March 15th, 2020, Governor J.B. Pritzker, an exercise of authority reserved to him under Section 71, 78, and 712 of the Illinois Emergency Management Act, Section 20, or, excuse me, 20 ILCS 3305, ordered that all bars and restaurants in the state of Illinois close from the close of business March 16th through at least March 30th, and whereas the governor's directive regarding bars and restaurants authorized food service to be offered via drive-through or curbside delivery, and whereas it is necessary and in order for the village of Morton to clarify the circumstances and situations in which restaurants and bars can continue to provide food service via drive-through or curbside delivery. Now therefore, by the powers vested in me as village president of the village of Morton, in pursuant to Section 12 dash 4 dash 4 of the Morton Municipal Code, I, Jeffrey L. Kaufman, hereby order as follows. One, beginning on March 17, 2020, all liquor licenses authorizing consumption on premises of alcohol, excuse me, of alcoholic liquor, beer, or wine are hereby suspended through March 30th, 2020. Two, bars and restaurants within the village of Morton are ordered to close effective 12:01 a.m. on March 17, 2020, continuing until 11:59 p.m. on March 30th, 2020. For the purpose of this order, a bar is defined as an establishment which held any liquor license authorizing consumption on the premises of alcoholic liquor, beer, or wine. For purposes of this order, a restaurant is an establishment which offers ready-to-eat food for sale or consumption on the premises. And actually, I'm going to stop right here, and I apologize very much for this, the draft I have in front of me, the hard copy draft, is actually the most recent version I had before the governor signed his executive order at about 5:30 today, and the one I had up on my computer is revised and mirrors the language that the governor used. So, in lieu of continuing to read this verbatim, what I'd rather do, and I apologize to the mayor, and this is my fault for not having an updated hard copy with me, I had it all planned digitally and didn't bring my charger. What our ordinance would do was, as I announced, suspend, or our executive order would suspend liquor licenses, second thing it does is generally mirrors the state's regulation of bars and restaurants to prohibit the, basically, consumption on the premises. The third thing our ordinance does is it prohibits the mass gatherings of 50 or more people using language that mirrors the language by the governor, and the fourth thing, final version the executive order does, is it discontinues the issuance, oh, chief has the updated version.
I was going to say, his looks different than mine anyway.
Thank you, my apologies. Picking up from the second bullet point of the executive order, beginning March 16th, 2020, at 9:00 p.m. through 11:59 p.m. on March 30th, 2020, all businesses in the village of Morton that offer food or beverages for on-premise consumption, including restaurants, bars, grocery stores, and food halls, must suspend service for and may not permit on-premise consumption of food or beverages. Such businesses are permitted and encouraged to serve food so that it may be consumed off-premises through means such as in-house delivery, third-party delivery, drive-through, and curbside pickup. In addition, customers may enter the premises to purchase food for carryout. However, establishments offering food for carryout, including food trucks, must ensure that they have an environment where patrons maintain adequate social distancing. Hotel restaurants may continue to provide room service and carryout. Catering services may continue. Liquor license holders who hold a packaged liquor license may continue to offer for sale packaged liquor for consumption off-premises in accordance with the Morton Municipal Code. Three, beginning March 18, 2020, at 12:01 a.m., and continuing through March 30th, 2020, at 11:59 p.m., all public and private gatherings in the village of Morton of 50 people or more are prohibited for the duration of the local state of emergency proclamation. A public or private gathering includes community, civic, public leisure, faith-based events, sporting events with spectators, concerts, conventions, and any similar event or activity that brings together 50 or more people in a single room or a single space at the same time. This includes venues such as fitness centers, health clubs, bowling alleys, private clubs, and theaters. This does not include venues that provide essential goods or services, such as grocery stores, pharmacies, doctors' offices, gas stations, banks, or credit unions, and shelters. Beginning, the fourth point, beginning March 17th, 2020, at 12:01 a.m., peddler's licenses, itinerant merchants licenses, or solicitor's licenses shall be available for issuance by the village of Morton. All existing issued peddler's, itinerant merchants, or solicitor's licenses are hereby suspended effective March 17, 2020, at 12:01 a.m., and continuing through March 30th, 2020, at 11:59 p.m. And then there's, in witness whereof, Jeffrey L. Kaufman, village president of the village of Morton, whose name is signed on this instrument, an affirmation, signed and executed this instrument as Executive Order 2020 dash 02, and signed willingly and executed it as his free involuntary act for the purposes therein expressed.
I have two questions. I don't think I heard churches, churches are included in this, of course, because of the number of people, so they really don't have a choice.
Correct.
Secondly, the purpose of this is to create an ordinance so by which the police have the way to enforce what we're trying to do.
Great, it's an executive order, but to create, it allows our ordinances to be enforced, yes.
I kind of follow up on that question, too. None of, none of what was just authorized is different than already been authorized by the state, we are just following the state.
The restriction on gathering, the restrictions on bars and restaurants is entirely consistent with what the state has done. We supplemented the bars and restaurants provision by specifically referencing local liquor licenses, the state, the governor's executive order, to my surprise, doesn't indicate that it's a restriction on the license, and I think that was appropriate and necessary, and then this also goes beyond that to address peddlers, solicitors, and itinerant merchants.
Is the clause about firearms and ammunition part of what Governor Pritzker?
No.
Okay.
That inclusion was a part of our ordinance, which is separate from what Governor Pritzker has documented.
Does the clerk have to sign this one?
No, they're, no, the clerk does not have to sign that one. And that's actually a notary.
Okay.
It's actually, so he's notarizing.
Okay, that's right. So, I'd just like to say, I appreciate the public support and understanding with this declaration. Now, we know this is going to be tremendous effect on the businesses of Morton, and we don't take these decisions lightly, and we will continue to be in sync with the federal, state, county guidelines moving forward, and this is important, because this thing is changing daily. So, please stay home if you can, please don't, you know, please avoid social gatherings, and as things change, we will notify you. And I might just say, we must all work together to do our part to keep this community safe, and that was the intent of the entire staff meeting for the last few days, is keeping the community safe, and this thing's going to be looked at daily, so as changes happen, we will notify you.
I just want to add, we did discuss the fact that the village hall is closed to the public. We also, in today's mail, mailed out everybody's utility bill. There are multiple ways that those bills can be paid without someone walking into the office. They can be paid online, they can be dropped in the drop box, there's a drop box out in front of our building, there's a drop box in the parking lot to the north of our building off of Madison, and there's, they can call the office and make a call, a credit card or a other types of payments, we can arrange, you know, work with them to get it paid online if they would like to do that. So, you know, I know there are people who are used to normally walking in every month with their payment in hand, they are not going to be able to do that, but, you know, all they have to do is reach out to us at our regular number, which is 266-5361, and one of us will be glad to walk them through, getting it paid for them, so.
Leanne, are there any restrictions to entering your office?
Close it to the public walk-ins, but we are there, so when you call, so if you see somebody at the door, we answer the door, open the door, answering our phones will allow people in.
But by and large, call is possible instead of stop.
Certainly check website and, and Facebook, we're trying to promote as many resources out there. I know there's a lot of concerns with businesses on support, loss of revenue, workforce, employee concerns, unemployment, we're trying to gather that, those details in the management chair.
One other thing, I apologize, mayor, I intended to indicate as a part of my report to you, as a part of the executive order which the governor signed just a few hours ago, the Open Meetings Act was addressed, and generally the rules on remote attendance were by and large waived, which would allow the village to hold meetings via phone conference or video conference, as long as there's a means afforded to the general public to participate, so as, that was a new addition very late, before your meeting, but that, just so the general public is informed, that could be a means in which future board meetings are convened during the duration of the pandemic and the state of emergency. Agendas would still be posted, and those agendas would include information for the public on how they participate, whether that's a phone conference where there's a dial online and a meeting code, like some of us may have- line and a meeting code, like some of us may have attended professionally on dial-in events, or whether that's video conferencing and there's a web address to go to. We would still provide that information to the public, and regardless of the means in which the meeting occurs, it is necessary that the public be afforded the opportunity to participate.
So, and on that note, we plan on canceling the March 6th meeting here, all of us sitting this close. I mean, April 6th. April 6th. So I anticipate the staff will come up with some idea how we might continue that with the council's recommendation. So they'll be working on that, and we'll try to get that to you a little sooner.
Are we, so we're canceling altogether, and then working on something, I'll call in for the following one then?
I'd say we've canceled the April 6th, unless the staff can get it together, then we can have it.
Okay.
And do it some system. So.
Just as an illustration of how fast-moving things are, we met at first thing this morning, we met at 9:00 this morning, spent a couple hours together.
Three hours, over three.
One of the discussion items was, you know, what to do with future meetings, and that's one of the things that's been recommended, is public meetings, you know, going forward, not be held to avoid the social gathering limits. And it was kind of the consensus that we not have the April 6th meeting, and then at 6:00 tonight, or 5:30 tonight, the governor signs an executive order that potentially opens up the door for, for, you know, remote participation. We haven't had a substantial opportunity to work through and vet the procedures that might work best for us. And so I think your summary is accurate, that, you know, we would certainly work together, find solutions to utilize the ability to have remote attendance meetings going forward and try to get those ducks in a row, certainly for meetings after April 6th.
My main concern is those four people aren't sick. So, I would like the fire chief now, Director of Fire and Emergency, to address some of our concerns we talked earlier. He's gonna address some of those, so you are all aware of what we're, where we're at.
As, as the mayor indicated, or your discussion talked about, we have met at the mayor's office on a couple of occasions now to discuss the plans for the village, obviously with the interest being maintaining essential services, that's not only emergency services, but also, you know, obviously, to every citizen, water, sewer, streets are, are very important. So those discussions are about how to protect our staff as well as to protect the public. On a, on a, on a more my department note, we've been working for at least the last week, if not a little bit more, with the health department, the local Tazewell County Health Department, who is in coalition with the other health departments in the area, as well as the hospitals, and our medical directors on how we can best respond to this emergency. We put together on Friday, or I put together on Friday, a response plan that has different levels based on the current situation, and when we go and we do different things, depending on how bad it gets, basically. It, we are addressing, you know, staffing concerns, and, and just trying to generally figure out how we can protect our staff. For our staff, it's no different than some of the things that I'm sure all of you have seen. We don't really have a choice whether we keep climbing the back of an ambulance or not, so we use personal protective equipment to the greatest degree possible. We started last week reviewing that stock, and we're in good shape. We have communicated some needs to the county on, on some things that we could use, but I will tell you that we're in better shape than most departments are in terms of our stock of, of personal protective equipment. And I will mention for those people, we've already had people, we are gonna be closing the, the fire station as well. We've already had people stopping in today wanting to buy from us personal protective equipment. And so I would just mention to the public, we're not in that business, and, and that, that stock that we do have is for our, our employees' protection and use. And most of it is, has come with training. This is not recent training. We train every year on how to use biohazardous personal protective equipment. It's a mandatory training by OSHA, so, you know, this is nothing that is, we're just starting with. Otherwise, we, we continue to communicate and get updates from the hospital. While we were sitting here, I just got a text update on some changes they're making at one of the hospitals on where patients should be directed. So, you know, things change on literally an hourly basis, but, but we do have a good communications setup with the hospitals. In fact, ironically, we just instituted a new online app communications route with the hospitals two weeks ago that allows us to communicate in live fashion over our phones by text, as well as an app that, what a situation is. So we can literally hit a button on our phones or on our iPads that we use, everything's electronic now, and notify the hospital that we're going to, that we're coming in with a patient that may need isolation, without having to have a long phone call about it. So, you know, we have really robust communications capabilities, and we continue to do that. But it is something that, that we are taking very seriously, and we are very concerned about it, and we do encourage the public to do all of those things that we're being told to do. Those things will maybe be updated as we go along, but certainly, you know, the, the social distancing, six feet is, is what is generally recommended to be the, the distance, you know? Changes like stop shaking hands, start cleaning. I know that, that it's hard to find cleaning products right now, but there are alternatives which are easily found on the internet, for instance, using bleach to, to clean. It usually is watered down at about a 1 to 10 or 2 to 10 ratio, and put it in a spray bottle. You just made your own effective cleaner. One of the things that, that I did wanna mention is, in most cases, read the directions, and you'll find that most cleaners require that cleaner to stay wet, to dwell, as we call it, for some time. Most cleaners actually have that amount of time on it. If you've ever read the back, been so bored as to read the back of a Lysol bottle, you'll see that that information is on there. So, you know, there's a lot of good information out there, and there's a lot of bad information out there, and it's just a matter of, of weeding through and, and keeping, you know, keeping everyone safe. Ultimately, I don't think that, that anyone thinks that they're going to somehow miraculously stop this. It's simply a matter of trying to control the rate of spread so that services can continue to be maintained. You know, obviously, there is no emergency department in the area that has a capacity to handle 1,000 patients, for instance. It doesn't exist. There's not that many beds, there's not that many nurses, there's not that many doctors, and, and so, you know, really the concentration is on, on getting the care to the people that need it the most, and not overburdening the healthcare system, which if, if you've looked at what Italy did, they had a lot of problems with that. So that's what we're, what we're trying to avoid. But I'm happy to answer any questions.
Well, they did disinfect our doorknobs and our conference table before we met this morning for three hours. I would, and I'll probably not do this justice, but to show you how quick this started, I got an email from the fire chief, it was a Thursday, that you had met with the medical examiner that is over, the paramedics, you can explain that? And I, we had to make some decisions on staffing and that. I thought, okay, later on today, well, within an hour, probably max, I got, it has to be done today because I have to report to the medical examiner first thing in the morning with my procedures in place. So it changed in a matter of an hour that we need to do this shortly before we had to do it. So we planned a 3:00 meeting, so many emails went out to make sure we could get the seven staff there to start making decisions at 3:00, and at 4:00, we had a conference call with RHM, Rural Home Missionary, that were inviting people from 30 states and Canada to Morton. So we've tried to be on top of it every day, but it's been changing every day. I'm sorry, things didn't get to you any quicker, but the document kept changing as the governor, and even as the president today asked us to have no more than 15 people. So why don't you explain that a little bit? I mean, if that's, I didn't do that justice, probably.
We do call it a medical director, 'cause a medical examiner actually does all the opses.
Well, I told you I was gonna do it justice.
We like to stay on the live patient side of things.
I guess not normal to be, the fire chief needs a decision in an hour.
But, but no, those, it, it does, it does move rapidly. I, I can't tell you that, to brag a little bit about what we've done, as I said, we put together a response plan. Our, our medical director and office turned around and asked if they could redistribute that to other departments as a template for, and, and I know that that's gone to a couple of other departments that I've heard from, that thanked us for helping them to put together their response plan too. So, you know, we feel pretty good about where we're at. Obviously, it's, it's guidelines, but, but, you know, things like, like, you know, cleaning the ambulance after every transport, you know? We, we obviously clean up anything, but we don't typically disinfect the walls after every transport because it's not previously needed. We're starting to do that now, you know, changes of, of procedures to try to get ahead of this instead of be behind it, so. I'm, but I, did you have a specific?
No, I just wanted to explain, 'cause I think it explains it in pretty good form, that I wouldn't say we went into panic mode, but we all had to make decisions.
Right.
As a group, what was the best for the citizens of Morton, and that was the effect of the last four or five days.
Right.
To the point that we were trying to decide whether to meet on Saturday, Sunday, or if we could wait till Monday morning to decide, and if we could get everybody together, so.
And our, and our processes start at the dispatch level, who instituted a, a protocol that was pre-existing. For a lot of us in emergency services, we thought it was going to be a flu virus that came along that, that gave us trouble. In this case, it's very similar, but it's a coronavirus. But a lot of plans already existed, and so dispatch had available to them nationally a, a card that they can use to ask callers questions, to try to determine whether they have symptoms associated with this virus. They're using that for police dispatches, for ambulance dispatches, so that we all have a little bit better idea of what we may be, find when, when we get there. But again, that, that, that card existed, it just hadn't been put into place yet. So that took place last week. You know, we've made operational changes, and we'll continue to make operational changes based on what our needs are. You know, our biggest fear is that call volume increases to a degree simply because people become scared, not because they need medical care. So we really, you know, are encouraging people to stay home and, you know, take care of yourself. And, but we are starting to put together some plans for how we can respond in non-traditional ways, maybe not even sending an ambulance to situations that don't sound emergent, and, and try to keep that from becoming an unnecessary transport to the hospital, so that those resources stay available for necessary transports to the hospital.
And Trustee Newman, I thought you had a very good email on your questions, and I personally asked the fire chief to email everybody on that, because that was a very good question you had there, so you, all of us understood that procedure.
Yeah, and I, and I don't think that went out to the entire board, I entered him directly, but the, the questions that, that have come up were related to, you know, exactly what I just said, how do you limit service so that you're getting the right care to the right people, and, and that's, that's exactly what we're working on. But using established medical, what we know about this virus, to try to, to determine who needs care and who, who, who may be able to wait, you know? We may see service delays at some point in the future. It may be that I, I don't have an unlimited amount of ambulances, no one does. So if we have 10 calls for service at the same time, and have two ambulances, we will make decisions based on what sounds to be the highest priority, and some people may not get them. I hope that it doesn't get to that point, but that's the type of thing that we're trying to project and plan for, so that we're ready for it if it does happen.
And planning for that, we're trying to protect the staff at every level, so we are prepared for worst case. So.
Just letting everyone know that the Tazewell County Health Department, as well as the EMA, have opened the Emergency Operations Center there, and they did that this weekend. So there's somebody there all the time, and, well, right now it's open, 9:00 a.m. to 3:00 p.m. is what they're doing, but for questions that the public may have from, from them, so.
And that, that center has liaisons with the departments who we've spoken, I've spoken to directly today, got a phone call from them, and those are the, those are the routes that we're going through and supposed to go through to request anything that we may need in the future, so that that's distributed in a, throughout the county to every communities in a way that makes sense.
And as mayor, I'd like to personally thank all of you for those meetings. No but one person can handle this situation. You're all top-notch, and every question you guys had, we had, and we tried to come up with some, so appreciate those efforts. So moving on, Director of Public Works.
I have a couple of less important items tonight.
Really?
So first I have Item A, Ordinance 20-24, this is an ordinance-making amendments regarding construction engineering inspection services to Title 11, Chapter 3 of the Morton Municipal Code.
Can we have a motion?
Some would.
Craig, you wanna?
If I could just read it real quick, it's a, it's a short paragraph, I promise. This is 1137 out of our subdivision ordinance on construction inspection, and this is the revision. It's D, the village to hire an engineer to provide sufficient construction engineering inspection services so that the village's engineer can certify that all construction was completed substantially in accordance with the approved plans. The actual expense incurred by the village for the services of the construction engineering inspector shall be paid by developer in accordance with Section 1126C. So with that, we recently worked on Fieldstone subdivision with Tom Armstrong, and you guys approved an agreement with me to hire an inspector. I think Tom would be here to support this. I think we saved him money and got him a better product and the village, so this kinda goes way back. Something I've struggled with my whole time here is, I believe it's a conflict of interest for the owner developer to hire the inspection, so it's been difficult. The mayor always challenges me and says I'm responsible, I've always rebutted him on this one, it's hard for me to be responsible if they work for the developer. We will hire that now, and I feel very comfortable, at least myself and for, you know, successors in the future, that there's enough inspectors that we can hire to do this job. The intent is not for this to cost the developer more money, it's just to get a better product for all parties at the end.
And to catch problems early so they can be corrected before they cost the developer money, them knowing that that's not acceptable. So it's fair to everybody, but you gotta have inspections to catch it before they put it in.
I'd be happy to answer any questions that you guys might have.
And I do challenge Craig.
And I would say the cost right now, you know, with Fieldstone, I mean, you're in, obviously, we don't intend to overburden, and I intend to work with the developer to make this work, but right now you're probably talking around $1,000, a lot is about what it costs for our inspection services for a job. So if you think of it in that terms, that's about what we're talking about here. And so I intend to keep a tight, you know, grip on that and work with the developer for something reasonable.
Is that, is this something that is, I guess, how is that negotiated with the developer? Is that at the kind of end, we're like, okay, here's the bill, or is that kind of the beginning we say, okay, here's what we're thinking we need for inspection? How does that, how does that?
Obviously, we work with Tom on Fieldstone as an example, you know, I, I basically gave him a not-to-exceed price, and we bill him as we go. I felt pretty comfortable. We've got internal staff that can cover some of the smaller stuff if we have to. So, I mean, I think it's on a case-by-case basis, but I intend to work with them to have something reasonable. And I would say an average-level inspector, I'm not looking for the $150 an hour guy either, but I think there's enough people out there that are better than what has been presented to me with very little experience, and, you know, I'm denying them, and that company just doesn't. The company that is the inspector- The company that is the inspector is usually the engineer. So, in some cases, they're basically just trying to find somebody off the streets. And so, that's where I've struggled with this. I'm like, really? You know, not to pick on them, but, you know, most people aren't going to succeed in Morton doing inspection if they've never done it before. It's not a fair position to put them in either. So, as you know very well, Mr. Parrot.
Is this done on a bid basis or is this just by somebody you know is rep, somebody you know can do the job?
Yeah, it'd be someone, be a professional service, so we would not bid that out. But like I said, I don't intend to use, I mean, I'm not going to use, like, if we use Morton Kerr and a lot of times the developer uses them, I plan to use a third party. I don't want that conflict of interest either for the engineer to be the inspector also. We'll find a third party to do that.
I think this is, I think this is a good thing, that kind of had a little bit more of an independent inspection than otherwise. And I guess my question before was, you know, how that's arranged with the developer as far as cost and it sounds like you work with them ahead of time, so at the end, they're not getting a gigantic bill that they were not expecting. I think that would be my only concern, but.
Sure.
It sounds like you have that covered and you'll go through that process with them.
Yeah. And I, I've got experience on all sides of this, actually, for the village of Morton. So, I worked on Trails of Timber Oaks and the private side. I've been on the construction side on the private side and now I've been on the village side. So, I can tell you in all situations, it was, it's an awkward relationship that needs fixed to allow me the opportunity, or the village, the opportunity to select that. Like I said, some developers may not like that, but at the end of the day, I can promise you, like a Tom Armstrong would tell you, you got me a better product too. So, they would rather me be the one that holds the contractor accountable, whether that be on the asphalt, that it's the appropriate, you know, density on the asphalt or, you know, whatever that may be. Let us be accountable to the contractor that you hire as far as, it's a little easier. Tom, you know, I know I'm speaking for Tom, but he would, he appreciates that. He doesn't want to be involved with that. I hired the contractor, you keep him accountable, you know, to all of your inspection standards.
I agree with you. I think in the overall, and I know it's a tough sell sometimes, but it's not as expensive as what it seems sometimes because I think you're saving, you're getting a better product and actually getting what you're paying for as a developer. You know, when they're paying for, you know, X number of feet of pipe at, you know, this size pipe, at this quality of pipe, they're actually getting that. And I think that's very, very important. You talk about asphalt, you know, asphalt's one, concrete's one, where there's a very, very big difference in price, you know, from one thing to the other that some people may not see. I think having that qualified inspector there to be able to point out and look at the test results and say, okay, this doesn't meet, I think that's huge for, I think it's a huge benefit for the developer, even though it does come with a cost. I think in the overall long-term, I think it's better for them.
And I could give you some of the painful stories. Jeff makes me be aware of some.
I'm going to give you one painful one.
Now, I worked for that company early in my career and so.
Out of Woodlong subdivision, I took the tour and I met the young inspector, never dealt with Morton before, how picky we are. And there's about 30 feet of curb all done in front of a man's house and it was the most butchered-up thing from a bobcat machine you've ever seen. And he was going to allow it and I told him, no, I was the mayor and you can just tear that out. So, I'll cut it and tear it out and you ought to have seen its face. It was torn out, I mean, that's not acceptable. And I've always said, once the contractors come to Morton, our inspections are tough, but we write the check immediately. So, we're not holding 10 percent for years, so we just expect honest, good work. In front of us, the young man, he just didn't know we would actually make somebody tear it out, but that should have been caught early. But it was done and they butchered it up and they cleaned the job up.
That's not the one I was talking about. Mine was a Diamond Point sanitary manhole, you know, poor compaction and we dealt with that for 20 years fighting that thing, so, anyway.
Okay. So, any more questions? We'll call the roll. Call the roll.
Blunier.
Yes.
Yes.
Lehman.
Yes.
Mennel.
Yes.
Newman.
Yes.
Parrot.
Yes.
Motion passes.
Next item is item B, Resolution 32-20. This is an IDOT resolution appropriating motor fuel tax funds for annual overlay project.
Move approval.
Second. Craig, you want to?
Yeah, so this, this is basically the IDOT to get things moving there. There's a timeframe to get things bid out. So, in your packet, I think this would authorize at this point 837,269.73 for inspection, construction, and then hopefully I don't have to come back with a consent agenda explaining what I might have screwed up in the future. So, that's what this is doing, trying to do a better job with that, so. And this would be based on the budget meeting tonight approving those streets, so those are in there. Obviously, that's subject to change in with your, all of your approval as we go forward.
Any questions?
Call the roll. Leach.
Yes.
Lehman.
Yes.
Mennel.
Yes.
Newman.
Yes.
Parrot.
Yes.
Blunier.
Yes.
Motion passes.
Next is a couple of notification items. Spring 2020 yard waste disposal program will go on as scheduled. It starts Saturday, April 4th and runs through Sunday, April 26th. It is closed over Easter, but I wanted to make everybody aware of that.
And I'd like to mention the fire chief has told us to go ahead with this because of weather. I don't know if you want to explain that or anything.
Yeah, I mean, I think that outside activities, especially as the weather warms up, are good, you know, and especially people working in their yard is a perfectly safe thing to go out and do and, you know, just maintaining that, that distance, but being outside is a good thing.
We thought we were going to have to close it and he did that today, so.
Can I ask a question just a little quickly?
So, it's very fluid.
Even though it's getting late, when we first started this, there were some challenges, size of branches, nails, maybe drawing in more material than we really had in the city. How did last year go?
I think, I mean, obviously, we hate to monitor it all the time, but once we started monitoring, the chief's help with auxiliary's been good. But yeah, it's, it's smooth, so.
I won't be coming with a pan of metal that went through there again. That hasn't happened in the last few years.
So, we get eyes on stuff, guys help. I mean, I think that helps just knowing that we're keeping an eye on things.
Yeah, I'll say when it's slow, I took a few things out. When it was slow, the guys just gave me a little hand to unload it and things, so that was much appreciated. You have a good group out there.
But when I was there, they were walking back and checking people. It's definitely improved.
Well, they were watching you pretty closely.
Yes, they were.
And that's 8:00 AM to 6:00 PM daily, starting Saturday, April 4th. Next would be item D, semi-annual hydrant flushing scheduled to begin Monday, March 30th, 2020 for approximately three weeks, and this will be from 7:00 AM to 11:00 PM. We'll update Facebook, some of those, try to keep people aware of the areas we're in. If you have discolored water, you know, concerns, call us, please call us. We'll check it out. We're the ones that can at least inform you to where we're at and what's going on.
In the past, you've done that over 11:00 PM to 7:00 AM. This time you're doing 7:00 AM to?
Yeah, several years ago, we did a more rigorous unidirectional flushing where we wanted to just keep going. So, we're kind of back to our less rigorous, more routine. Obviously, things are going pretty good. We're holding minimum chlorine residuals at the bar reaches of the system and we're hoping our project here comes soon that hopefully gets us out of the woods on some of these things. So, yeah, a little less rigorous here.
Is that all you have?
That's all I got tonight, Your Honor.
Zuning is not here tonight, so there's nothing there. Village trustees, do you have anything you want to add? Well, I'm sorry to inform you, we do need a closed session here tonight since we're not going to be here possibly in two weeks. So, I'll have council read that and then we'll adjourn for five minutes, get a drink or something and we'll be here.
Closed session is requested tonight to discuss the purchase of real property per five ILCS 120/2C5.
So, if I could have a motion?
So, move.
Second.
Call the roll.
Lehman.
Yes.
Mennel.
Yes.
Newman.
Yes.
Parrot.
Yes.
Blunier.
Yes.
Leach.
Yes.